There was a giant tiger mascot.
No, I missed the bus.
It was lovely.
Like, I literally missed the bus.
Uh huh.
Because you folks were bussed.
There's probably a lot of background to that.
Didn't you, you were on the bus, weren't you? The bus that took the Board of Governors around the campus?
I remember being on a bus.
Yeah, there was a bus.
Was it a tram or a bus?
Eh, it kind of looked like a tram.
I was on a tram. I remember the tram. Don't remember the bus.
I'll call it a bus because it had multiple people.
Okay. I have mouse pads, so I'm gonna buy a mouse pad right now. Somebody is gonna offer me a free mouse pad and I'm gonna say no because I want this one that looks like a rug.
Oh, really? Nice. Okay. We got Amy, Pam, and Tom. Can they see us?
We can see you.
Oh, yay! Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful. Okay, well, with that.
Yep, they're on.
Good morning. I would like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees Executive Committee meeting to order this morning on April 19th, a little past 11:00 AM. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like to ask our board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us. I am Terry Lucas, Board Liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, which is calbright.org/board. For those public attendees who wish to make public comment via Zoom, please use the Q&amp;A feature to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comments should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, can you please call the role?
Heldegard Agüinaldo.
Present.
Amy Costa.
Present.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Cam Haynes.
Here.
Jolena Grande.
Here.
Jennifer Perry. Bill Rawlings. We have Coram President Costa.
Great, thank you so much. With that, we will proceed with our pledge of allegiance. Trustee Grande, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I would be delighted to if you'd stand and place your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you so much. With that, we are on item 1.3 of the agenda, which is discussion of the order of the agenda. Colleagues, does anybody have any changes to the order of the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will go into my president's report, followed by the CEO report. I don't normally give lengthy comments, and I'm not gonna start today. But I will say that recently, there was a wonderful CalMatters article entitled "Calbright Star Is Rising", and I really just could not agree more. And I was sharing with my colleague, Board Member Haynes, that I recently came back on a trip from DC with my son. And of course, while you're there, you learn a lot about our founding fathers, many of whom had, you know, serious and deep flaws. And, you know, even in the midst of that, you know, they all had a vision for a different type of society. And I think today, we're still trying to kind of bring that to better fruition, which is a true egalitarian society. And what struck me, I went to Monticello, is, you know, Thomas Jefferson had a lot of emphasis on the idea of public education because it really was the cornerstone of a healthy democracy, having an educated electorate. And, you know, obviously today too, we've talked a lot about, more so than in my adult lifetime in the last couple of years, about our institutions and how a jump at get, some of them were created not with everyone in mind and favoring only some of the very few and disadvantaging many. Calbright is really, in my mind, the epitome of systems change. And so it was so nice to see that work be recognized in a public forum. It's hard work. And often in higher ed, what we do is we seek hacks, we seek workarounds, ways to make the system more equitable, ways to make the system more inclusive. And Calbright doesn't do that because at the ground level, at the base of the foundation of Calbright was equity. And so anyway, I just wanna acknowledge staff, you know, that it was really a nice public acknowledgement of the work. I know when you involved in this kind of large-scale change, there are naysayers, and sometimes it's difficult. But I do believe that that history will prove us right. With that, I will turn it over for the CEO's report.
Thank you, President Costa, and good morning to President Costa, Vice President Agüinaldo, and members of the Calbright Trust Board of Trustees Executive Committee. Yesterday, as I've done every spring since becoming president of Calbright, I had the opportunity to testify before the California Assembly Budget Subcommittee on Education. While the tenor of the conversation really ranged, we still faced opposition with some stakeholders. But Calbright's message was very clear. We are a college that's positioned for growth and expansion, and it is critical that the state continue to invest in our work to identify solutions to the shared challenges and equity goals of California, of our California community colleges. In less than two academic years, we've grown enrollment by roughly 400% to a student body of 2,400 students. In 2022, we more than doubled the number of certificates awarded, and thus far into 2023, we're on pace to more than double it again. We are on track to complete every recommendation from the state auditor and are reaching and surpassing all of our legislative milestones. As President Costa mentioned, the recent CalMatters article stated, "California's only fully online community college is no longer struggling for students as the state's tiniest. Calbright's enrollment exceeds four bricks and mortar community colleges and is growing at a considerable clip, even as more than 40 other campuses continue to shed students and the system as a whole is just now rebounding from an enrollment collapse." Building a new college from the ground up takes time, and I just wanna say I am fiercely proud of our accomplishments. I'm proud of the model that we're building, and I'm proud of the Calbright team and the organization that we've become. All of these data points highlight the efficacy of our student support endeavors, and so what is critical is that we continue to build and refine Calbright's model so that we're positioned for rapid expansion in the years ahead. We made the very intentional decision to prioritize the accreditation process in order to bolster our foundation and provide more options and opportunities for our students. We're building new programs, many of which the board has already taken the steps to approve, and all of the labor work we're doing now will pay dividends in the near future. We'll be able to iterate and evolve faster, launch programs in a cohesive and measured manner, and continue to expand the capacity of the community colleges system and open the doors of opportunity to more Californians. Next week, our first cohort of bitwise apprentices will begin the next phase of their student journey in Oakland. We are in the process of testing initial hypotheses in our collaboration with UC Irvine, and our expanding teams are all ready to meet the growing demands of Calbright's programs. In simplest terms, we are a college that's really hitting its stride. Adult learners are rarely the beneficiaries of evidence-based efforts to nurture their success, and as the leading edge of the learning curve, it's Calbright's role in the community colleges system to identify solutions to this complex equation and share what we learn in order to create a more equitable and a more accessible system. While we have a considerable amount of work ahead of us, we are also a different institution today than we were in 2019, and I'm thrilled and excited by what lays ahead. Thank you, President Costa, and this concludes my remarks.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. The board will now move into closed session. We have one item on the closed session agenda, conference with labor negotiators. Is there any public comment on the closed session item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Thank you. We expect return from closed session in approximately half an hour. We are... Thank you. The board has reconvened from closed session, and we did take an action. The board voted unanimously to authorize the Vice President of Human Resources to have Calbright join the benefit pool of the California Value Trust to provide benefits affected July 1st, 2023, and to further authorize the President and Chief Executive Officer to execute any agreements and documents to effectuate that change. Next, we'll move on to Section 3 of the agenda, which is the consent agenda. And I did want to just make a note about this item for both the board and the public, that Consent Agenda Item 3.2 was revised after the agenda was published to delete the Department Chair faculty positions. Those positions will be brought forward to the board at a later day. With that, do any trustees wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion or separate vote? Seeing none, I will ask if there's any public comment on the consent agenda.
President Costa, there is no public comment.
With that, I will entertain a motion in a second.
Move approval.
Second.
And Haynes and Epstein. Just call them all.
Heldegard Agüinaldo. Heldegard Agüinaldo. Heldegard Agüinaldo.
Are they muted from here?
Heldegard Agüinaldo.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Cam Haynes.
Hi.
Jolena Grande.
Hi.
Jennifer Perry. And Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Motion carries, President Costa. Great, thank you. With that, we're gonna move into the action portion of the agenda. We have Item 4.1, which is the CC CT Board Elections, and I'm gonna actually turn it over to our wonderful colleague, Board Member Haynes. As you know, this is an annual item, and because of Board Member Haynes' extensive experience, both as a local trustee as well as with the league itself, she generally has very graciously offered to review the candidates and put forward a slate of candidates that she thinks aligns with the best needs for Calbright. With that, I'll turn it over to Board Member Haynes.
So thank you for that kind and generous endorsement. So as you already know, there is a slate of 16 candidates for nine positions. There, among that six, those 16 candidates, there are seven candidates who are currently on the Triple CT Board. And just a reminder, the members who are elected can run for three terms of three years each. So some of these candidates have accomplished one term and they're running again. Some have accomplished two terms, and they're running for their third and final term. Those candidates who are currently on the board are asterisked. So that would be Barry Snell from Santa Monica CCD, Lauren Steck from Monterey Peninsula Community College District, Suzanne Lee Chan from Ahoney Community College District, Marissa Perez from Cerritos Community College District, and Barbara Dunshee from North Orange Community College District, as well as, down below, Item Number 12, Carmen Ramirez from Merced Community College District, and Andra Hoffman from Los Angeles Community College District. Those that do not have asterisks are either, some of them have run before and not been elected, and then others are new to this candidate slate. I will, what I'd like to do, since we, just to remind us you had, hopefully you had an opportunity to read what each of these candidates have said relative to their to their commitment, to their community involvement, to the things that they care about. It's a relatively short synopsis, how many years they've served on their, these are all trustees, many of them serving for multiple campaigns, others are relatively new. I think what I would like to share with you is sort of the thinking that I go through when I am trying to make a selection. Now, I currently serve as a Triple CT Board Member. I am in my final term of three years, so I will have served at the end of, the beginning of May, I will have served nine years. I will be stepping down. So there are two vacancies. I'm gonna be one of the vacancies, and a colleague on that board is gonna be another vacancy. So of the remaining candidates, of the, so there's only, so wait a minute. You get to vote, we get to vote for anybody. We can take somebody off, and I'm gonna sort of be making kind of like that recommendation. Or we can vote for them. So, so I wanna talk about a little bit about the makeup of the board and some of the attributes that I look for relative to that. I'm looking for candidates, and many of these are candidates who are leaders in their respective trustee boards. That means that they've taken a leadership role. It means that they're, they've also have served as Triple CT officers relative to committees. There's a number of committees that they're likely to serve on for the league. So they've done that sort of thing. Some of them have served as ACCJC accreditation, and they've gone on visits. They volunteered for, as I said, the Triple CT, as well as the league committees, such as the Latino Caucus, the Asian Pacific Islander Caucus, the African American Caucus, Women's Caucus, as well as the Veterans Caucus and some. And then there's others for like, for example, for the student-centered funding formula. There's, there are trustees who serve on that as well, financial aid, basic needs, and the Student Housing Committee. So what I, what I look for is what has their engagement been either while they've been on the Triple CT Board or before they've, they've taken the step of wanting to run? And then, and then many of them have an expertise, and they have, they have do presentations before. For example, in May, we will have a Triple CT Annual Conference, and they've done presentations. They've sat on panels. They've also served in a national capacity at the ACCT National Conference. And so those are the kinds of things that I think are important for us to sort of make a judgment of that. I will also say that when we start, when we start to talk about equity and we start to talk about diversity, diversity has no meaning if, if we don't see that reflected in the committees that are serving. If we don't see that kind of leadership rise to participation there. So I am, so I am looking for a Triple CT Board that reflects the state. If we have 70% students of color, I'd like to see our boards reflect that as well. If we have 50% women and those who self-identify however they want, then we need to see that reflected on our board. So I'm looking to make certain that there is a balance there. I will say that currently, the Triple CT Board have more women than men, but not by, not by much, much, but that there are more women than men. So with that said, and if you, if you have any questions, then please raise your hand. But I do have some recommendations, and then I, then I'd like...
And I have one comment that's a little bit maybe snarky, but I do just wanna say it for the record. The league has not always been as full-throated in their support of Calbright as I would personally like. I don't know in your research if you know if any of these candidates can kind of help us in that regard. I mean, we are a member of the community college family. And, you know, I think, you know, part of the value of the league is that all of the community colleges walk in lockstep with one another. I don't know if your research led you there.
So there's, that's really, I mean, the other thing I do, I do go online and I do a search. So there have been candidates that have had problems, and a news article will have expressed itself. I've listened to certain meetings, but that doesn't really come up.
Exactly. That's a niche. I mean, I know it's an important issue for us, but...
That's, it's a challenge. But what I, this is what I will say, is, while that doesn't necessarily rise to the occasion of an agendized item, I know by serving on that committee that there are more in support, at least individually, for Calbright. Because I've, I've shared, and I, and I'm very outspoken in how I share relative to that, and I'm outspoken when folks aren't full-throated in their approach. Now, that's Pam Haynes. But it's, that part, it is difficult. What I, so this is what I would say to Calbright. Calbright is doing, and this, and this, and our board is doing the supportive efforts and the advocacy that it needs to do. We need to show up, though, at the conferences. We need to be presenters at the conferences. And then we need to continue the work that we're doing because I gotta tell you, at the end of the day, the data speaks for itself. If we end up having a broad section of folks of color who are getting through our courses and their certificate, I don't care what they say because we will have the data, and our students will be the exemplars of what we are trying to do. And so I proudly, no matter where there's an opportunity, talk about the demographics, the age of our students, that they're across the state, and that they are succeeding. And, and if, 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 if our colleges do some of those things, like allow for flexibility, allow for, for some courses that are not, the difference between seat and, butts in seats versus, you know, credit for prior learning. Though, those things, they're already capable of doing, then they just need to do them. So I think that needs to be our message, and I think we need to carry that message in those rooms as well. But we are doing all of the right things, and so I'm down for that. Yes, please.
I'll just add one thing to that, which is, I think, you know, the leadership of individual institutions within California, both the presidents and CEOs of the colleges and also the trustees, they present a really interesting opportunity to create the conditions for this work to happen. Like, in the conversations with many CEOs in the system that I have, there are extraordinarily, extraordinary leaders amongst my sister colleges who are leading and pushing for student-centered approaches to a lot of the work we do. And the reason I am actually so proud that this institution is a part of the California community colleges system is largely because I see opportunities for me to support my colleagues in the system in engaging in this work, in trying to see a way forward, in being the experimental engine for some of the things that may be harder to implement in this moment on their campuses, not because of the lack of desire
That's right.
or will, but because sometimes we don't always, at the local level, create the conditions for that. So this election is particularly important from my perspective, not just because of the views on Calbright as a specific institution in isolation, but because of the deep importance of having folks on the trustee board that are open-minded and have a cultivated understanding of the core challenges that we face as a system, and that we may open a dialogue and a conversation as to how the work of this institution not just complements, but really can accelerate a lot of the core work that many leaders in the system really want to accomplish together. The equity goals, the goals around innovation, the goals around the ability for us to be responsive and supportive to our students. And so, you know, that's the value I see and the opportunity I see in not just this election, but in the work of the CCT Board and the CEO Board. It has all, is not, as President Costa pointed out, is not always shown up in the ways that we might hope, but, you know, that's a work in progress. So I continue to be hopeful that this will, you know, this will, this will lead the current of change that's needed. So appreciate your comments, and also thank you for the opportunity to voice mine.
So with that said, I'm gonna start with the two vacant, the two vacant seats with the two candidates that I wish to put forward as votes. The first one is Mr. Abud, who is at Santa Barbara Community College District. He is young, dynamic. He's been on the, he's served on the Santa Barbara Board for eight years. And, and I think we need young blood. I think, and he's engaging, I'll pull a quote. He's, everybody sort of starts off with, they're equity-minded. So, but his, his, one of his quotes was, "Student success rooted in DEIA should be the overarching goal. This includes financial aid, equity, student housing, and childcare. We need to focus on developing strong relationships with the many new state legislators in order to maintain funding for our goals during the budget shortfall." The issue around childcare has come up a couple of times. And it's something that it's very difficult to fund using public dollars, but it looks like maybe we'll even get some federal help there as well. The, the next candidate that I wish to put forward for that, for the vacant seat, the second vacant seat is Ms. Oliveris Lambert. She is a community college graduate. She's a strong vocal advocate for DEIA, equity-focused, and financial aid, housing, and childcare again. She put herself through school. She, she is a legislative judge in Clovis and Atwater. She's the mother of two young children, nine and seven, I believe. She is a volunteer before she ever, ever thought about doing this for the Puente Program. And this is her quote. "I became a trustee to pay it forward. Access to community college was the first opportunity that made all the rest possible throughout my life. I am wholeheartedly committed to doing all that I can to increase access to community college and its resources to those who need it the most." Again, we, we had, we had several candidates who wanted this, but I really think that these two candidates stood out the most. I was, I am not alone. I do know of a couple of other groups who make kinds of recommendations beyond their own boards. I made the same recommendation to Los Rios. And so, so I feel like I'm not alone in making these two candidates, the ones that I recommend. I will, I will now tell you that there are seven additional seats. I have six candidates that I will move forward and then discuss the one, the one opening that, that I need to talk to you about. So I would move Barry Snell forward from Santa Monica Community College District. Barry has, has served his district well. We sat, we have been seatmates for a number of years. He's thoughtful, he is very active, he is, I think, was one of the presidents of one of the African American Caucus. So he is one that I would continue, and I would, I would recommend a vote for him. Marissa Perez is from Cerritos Community College District. Leadership is her, is her middle name. She is just stepping, she's currently the president of the Triple CT Board and will be stepping down, but she has been of service, she has been thoughtful. And Cerritos really has worked very, very hard with its, with its students of color, and is really seeing progress. She works very well with her CEO. And so I would bring her, her name forward. Barbara Dunshee from North Orange Community College District is the next person that I would bring forward. Carmen Ramirez is relatively new to the board. She is from Merced, and hopefully you've had a chance to read her, her comments. And then Andra Hoffman is from Los Angeles Community College. Andra has been a Triple CT president. I take that back. She is the upcoming Triple CT president. It's, and she is... and she is, she, um, has been a community college, um, uh, uh, student, as well as someone who, um, who works in a community college district, not Los Angeles. Los Angeles is by far the biggest, and it would be very hard not to have Los Angeles Community College represented, when you have 206,000 students. But, but she is a good representative, um, um, of that district. So those are the six, um, which I am, uh, so this is always hard. I, I am unwilling to, um, to, to vote for the seventh, um, person on this, on this particular recommendation of someone to return, uh, and that would be, um, Lauren Steck, Monterey Peninsula Community College. Um, I, 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 what, so it, this is a person who is very likely to be re-elected. He has name recognition. I have challenges with this particular candidate. I don't sort of wish to elaborate on that, um, but I will leave that to the discretion of the Board. We have discretion to vote for one member, two members. We just can't vote for more than nine. Um, and so, uh, if, if, if there are those here who wish to vote for, for Lauren or anyone else on this ticket, um, that, that's fine, or not to, or just to vote for the ones that, um, have been recommended. So I will leave that to the, to the Board to do so.
As always, I want to thank you, Pam. I know you, um, put a lot of time and effort into this, and I really appreciate your comments and your thoroughness. Um, with that, I'd like to open it up to my colleagues. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding Pam's, uh, Board Member Haynes' presentation?
President Costa, can we get a reading of all of the candidates Pam is suggesting? Because it looks like I have only counted seven total, and I was wondering, is seven the, the total number that we're looking for? Or was there going to be eight that she was suggesting?
So I, okay, so it was.
I have, this is what I have. I have Barry Snell, Marissa Perez, Deanna Oliveras Lambert, Barbara Dunesheath, Jonathan Abud, Carmen Ramirez, and Andra Hoffman.
Okay, I have the same. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay, and Pam's clarified, that's, that's correct.
No, it's, um, was it Suzanne Lee Chan?
No, Suzanne, oh, it's Suzanne Lee Chan is the other, okay. I, I missed her by, I, I missed saying her name. I apologize.
I'm, I'm glad you said that name, because that was the name that I was gonna pitch in. I'm aware of her work, uh, and advocacy of the API community.
And I recommend.
Go on my soapbox for her.
Good.
Great. So that means that, uh, by that count, there would be, uh, with Pam's recommendations, a total of eight candidates that we would be supporting. Um, colleagues, any other questions or comments?
I guess, uh, um, not, not being familiar with all of the remaining candidates on the list, um, is there collectively any additional knowledge with folks from the Executive Committee, uh, given that we have, um, nine potential votes to elect into the process?
I can see for myself. I don't. I mean, the ones that Pam identified are the people who I'm most familiar with or that I've interacted with.
Uh, I know Lauren Steck. Um, he's kind of a flamboyant guy that you see around, you know, he dresses, interestingly, and.
Hawaiian shirts.
Hawaiian shirts. Um, I don't know, I've always thought he was nice. I don't really know about his policy positions in the, uh, in the meetings, but, you know, he was, he's the only one on this list that I really know.
He, he's, he's currently of, um, so Lauren is currently a vice president, so he is positioned in two years to be the president of the Triple CT. Um, he serves on the, um, SCFF, um, the, the Student-Centered Funding Formula. Um, my, my perspective is he is there. Um, he is not supportive of that process. Um, but he is there to sort of mix, you know, make sure everything is according to Hoyle and, um, a bit of a contrarian at, at times. Um, I have other issues.
Yeah, I, I think someone who doesn't support the SCFF is probably not on this terms.
Uh, any other, uh, Board comments?
Is that, is there a public comment on this item?
President Costa, there's no public comment.
Okay, colleagues, I will entertain a motion in a second.
I'd like to move approval. This is Member Grande of the suggested slate of candidates that Member Haynes has provided to us.
Ms. Aguinaldo, all second.
Motion on the floor with that. Can you please call the roll?
Eldogard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry. Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Great, thank you, and thank you again, Board Member Haynes. Um, next on our action items is 4.2, which is a second addendum to the Professional Services Agreement with StackNexus.
Anna.
President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Board. I'm seeking Board approval of the StackNexus addendum. During the last two fiscal years, Calbright engaged with StackNexus. It's a Salesforce technology solution provider to troubleshoot and reconfigure its data tracking system for the transition to technology customer relationship management CRM program. Salesforce Trelhead LMS platform includes the student learning content and student information. The existing agreement covers subject matter expertise for students facing support and work involving their technology services teams to implement program improvements, including backend technical support to fix data tracking issues on Calbright CRM platform. The, excuse me, the addendum will narrow the scope of the contract to the technical service team. Okay, um, so technical support will include, um, if there are any deprecation, Trelhead modules, user management. I would like to take a bite right before I stood up here.
Thank you for getting your water. Take your time, Miss Spine.
I didn't know that was gonna wrap up that quickly, and I was like.
I know, I saw you sprinting. Don't feel the need to sprint for the days.
I know. Well, I was like, oh, I should have been on the ready. Oh, so technical support. Um, it's deprecation of any Trelhead modules, user management access. They also do update coding to reflect, um, Trelmex completion, um, helping us identify when students have completed certain components, uh, testing and deleting of sandboxes. Then they also were providing, uh, student support, technical issues related to student logins, technical questions related to platform experience, content-specific questions, and then some exam certification prep. So the hours of both technical and student support fluctuate from month to month. One example is, um, recently, must have been early January, I believe, a self, Salesforce deprecated learning module that Calbright students, uh, were leveraging in our CRM program. So they had to access the new module, and we had to identify if it needed to be, uh, reintegrated, identify something new or removed. And so once it was removed, it did require kind of a data structure and workflow to be created. So this is an instance when StackNexus and their technical support team, um, hours increase in response to our technical, um, requirements. So our IT team actually manages the hours, and they track those in project, in our project management software. Um, and the contract originated due to limited Calbright resources and capacity to manage the integration. So our IT and product team will be assessing the technical support and identify if this potential area is something that they can build and have, um, internal capacity to do. Uh, we were also in the process of hiring CRM instructional experts, which was challenging, because this is a very specific area. Uh, but recently, in the last couple of months, we were able to recruit and hire two new contract instructors to help support students. And these new hires will allow us to build capacity internally, and will allow us to decrease our, um, interdependency and kind of student support relationship with StackNexus. So StackNexus does provide a very specialized IT support service and, and educational subject matter expertise. Uh, so while finding IC support for Salesforce or CRM platform is possible, including instructional support has been challenging. So we are seeking your approval for the StackNexus addendum, authorizing additional funds, and extending the contract for the 2023-24 fiscal year, uh, not to exceed 320,000. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you so much. Colleagues, any questions on this item? Seeing that, I'll see if there's any public comments on this item.
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Thank you. With that, I will entertain a motion in a second.
Some move.
Epstein on the motion.
Pam Haynes.
Second wrong.
I think Pam got you, Bill. Can you please call the roll?
Eldogard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry. And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Great, thank you so much. Next up, we have item, uh, 4.3, which is, uh, consideration of the California Online Community College, Calbright, and the California Teachers Association, its Calbright Faculty Association, Presentation of Initial Collective Bargaining Proposal and Calbright's Initial Proposal.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, members of the Board. Um, today, we, I'm asking for you, uh, this is an opportunity to provide public comment, uh, on our initial proposals from Calbright Faculty Association, and, um, on the collective bargaining agreement and adoption of Calbright's initial bargaining proposals, which will allow us to commence bargaining with our CFA, uh, labor partners.
Great, thank you. With that, any trustee comment or questions on this item? None, I'll open it up for public comments.
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Okay, with that, colleagues, I will consider a motion in a second.
I'll move to approve, Rawlings.
Second.
I've got Rawlings, who was the second?
Aguinaldo.
Great, perfect. Do that, you will call the roll.
Eldogard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry. And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Great, next is our information and reports section. We have, uh, standing item 5.1, Reports on Contacts and Purchases.
Good afternoon, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Board and Trustees. I'm here to present the contracts and purchases for March 2023. Um, for the contracts, there were ten contracts totaling at the most 336,673, and purchases totaling approximately 443,014.
Great, thank you so much. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Seeing that, I'll open it up for any public comments.
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, with that, we will move on to our constituency group reports. Uh, first up, we have item 6.1, which is the Calbright Academic Senate Reports.
Yes, I have my water. Just in case. Good afternoon, President Costa and Vice President Aguinaldo. Calbright's Faculty Senate is happy to report that several positive developments are underway within Learning and Instruction Department. Our medical coding has held a webinar last month, and it's had a great, uh, turnout for students. WF500, which is our Essentials 21st Century Skills flagship course, is in collaborations with Career Services, and they have developed a career prep meetups, where, which are successful, and they have launched, and they've had excellent student feedback. And we've had three sessions so far, and are finding that the attendance are growing each time. Our IT500, which is our IT support, and our IT510, which is our cyber course, are the new courses of launch that we, that we've reported on before. And IT-supported cybersecurity students have reached above 70% completion of the coursework since the launch of the newly updated curriculums. We're currently hosting Calbright Tech Talk, our 2023 series, and our speakers are featuring Black professionals in tech to honor, which was past the Black History Month. IT520 and IT525, which is our CRM courses, have updated with a new module covering the new spring 2023 release, which rolled out last month. And as always, our faculty's focus is concentrated upon working hard to deliver the best possible student learning experience, and we cannot accomplish these goals without extensive support and leadership. And today, the Academic, Academic Senate would like to highlight the positive developments emerging from ongoing collaborative, uh, support among the Calbright faculty and the administration. Our Vice President of Learning and Instruction, Dr. Shannon McCarty, and our Dean of Learning and Innovation, Dr. Katriva Jones Monroe, have been working tirelessly to collaborate with faculty to develop effective solutions to long-stern, uh, longstanding issues. As with Calbright's faculty members, these two administrators truly understand that our students deserve the best. Their tireless efforts to innovate and improve through faculty projects and cross-functional initiatives with other Calbright teams are already reflected in the numerous improvements to the student learning experience during their relatively short time in this institution. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your report. This month, we do not have reports from the Faculty Association nor the School Employees Association. But I'm very happy to report on item 6.4, we have our very first report from the Calbright College Student Body Organization. So, uh, obviously a momentous time for us here, uh, and I, I welcome Jeremy Cox to provide the, uh, report.
Hello, everybody. I, I apologize that I thought that that was gonna be in the next meeting. I have a report ready, but, uh, I don't know if we got approval to actually present it.
I think you're approved. I have your notes, Jeremy, so go for it.
Okay, give me just one moment to pull that up. Thank you very much. And it's really nice to be here. Thank you so much for inviting me. Hold on, and if you hear my little one in the background, I apologize about that. Um.
No worries. We all have our own little ones.
So again, yes, thank you very much. It's, it's my pleasure to be speaking with you all today on behalf of the first official student body organization at Calbright College. Uh, my name is Jeremy Cox. I'm the SBO President. Um, I, um, uh, we're very excited to be representing the entire SBO, or I am very excited to be representing the entire SBO team. We have six other members that are working with us. We have Jas Kohler, who's our Chief Executive Assistant. Ellen Martinez is our Commissioner of Student Support Services. Michael Way is our Commissioner of External Affairs, as well as our delegate for the Student Senate of California Community Colleges. And then we also have, uh, Vanna Wong, who is our Commissioner of Alumni Relations. And we have both M.D. Abdul Ahad and Abigail, Abigail Solis. They're filling the roles of Commissioner of Academic Affairs. They're, they've all expressed interest in joining, uh, their, they all expressed interest in joining the SBO team before our official election was held back in January, and they were formally inducted into the SBO after a personal interview. Uh, we were also able to hold two official meetings before the governor lifted the emergency declaration, which reenacted the Brown Act regulations, and this has had an impact on us being able to hold our official meetings. Uh, we have, however, authored a resolution to the Brown Act that would allow our team to meet via teleconference without having to disclose our personal addresses. Uh, this resolution was voted on and approved at the 2023 General Assembly in April. And like, that happened at the beginning of this month. Uh, and there is now legislator support for our resolution in Assembly Bill, uh, 1275. In the meantime, we have scheduled, uh, training meetings to give our team an opportunity to learn more about student government and leadership. We are proud to represent Calbright College at the 2023 General Assembly. Our students have the opportunity to meet the Chancellor of California Community Colleges, Dr. Daisy Gonzalez, thanks to the amazing networking skills of Paul Medina. And also, he's everywhere, isn't he? Um, we also presented a workshop on leadership that was, uh, proposed, planned, and executed by our Vice President, Mechala, uh, Hiriani, Mechala Hiriani. And then, uh, the SBO team has expressed enthusiasm about being. And then uh the SBO team has expressed enthusiasm about being involved in helping Calbright College establish a channel for a student body to share their feedback. While interviewing each SBO member individually, I was surprised to learn the overall consensus is that Calbright offers something that is so important for anyone who is interested in furthering their education, but might not have the time or the resources required to succeed at a traditional community college. We also spoke about the idea that online learning is not the only, not only the way of the future, but that Calbright is paving the way for other organizations to provide this type of learning vehicle that will make it possible for more people to become educated in another field or learn to advance in their uh current career path. Our SBO team is a representation of diversity with individuals from varied backgrounds and unique experiences, working together towards a common goal of serving and representing our student body. It's worth noting that the team is proud to have an equal representation of both women and men. We are excited to be a part of this inaugural organization and look forward to talking to students and alumni, gathering feedback, and sharing it through the proper channels. Meckala and I are looking forward to working closely with the Calbright College SBO team and the Board of Trustees to continue to make a positive impact here at Calbright.
Thank you so much. On behalf of the Board, congratulations to you and your colleagues um on your position for the student body organization, we look forward to working with you more in the future. Uh with that, we've reached the public forum portion of our agenda, are there any members of the public who wish to be heard?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great, with that, Board of Trustees is now complete, and we can adjourn. Thank you very much for your participation.
Thank you so much.